Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. I ask that everyone stand in witness to the vote.
To the flag of the United States of America and to your good brother for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Just to mention that our chairman, Jack Whitmer, is away this evening, so Jim Pittman, vice chair, will take over his duties for this evening. I'd like to start with the agenda review. Do we have anything to add toward the end of this evening?
Yes, one additional item. After the acceptance of minutes, I have an update regarding an event at the Art Center.
Okay, thank you. And is there any other addition to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, thank you very much. I believe this is the time where we will have our principal, Mrs. Morrissey, come up. A new student presentation.
Oh, Mr. Pittman, you don't want me to do the student presentation? Hello, welcome. Thank you for joining us here. You all know that Evanham School celebrated its twentieth birthday last week. In 2003, this school was opened with a dedication ceremony broadly held in this very room, maybe with some familiar faces right where we are now. And the celebration of twenty years wouldn't be possible without the support of the board, the community, the families, and the staff. Thank you to all of you for helping to make the past twenty years a success and giving EES a bright future ahead for many more. Thank you very much. There's another reason why Evanham School is so successful, and I don't know if you know this about today or not, but today is National Custodians' Day, October 2nd, and this building has been taken care of wonderfully over the last twenty years. It is in capable hands as a facility with our maintenance department, and it is in skillful and loving hands day to day with Mark McKinley and Cam Boswell, without whom none of this would be remotely possible. My deepest appreciation, and I'm sure our staff's deepest appreciation, goes out to both of them. And tonight, our school would like to share a bit of our music program with you. On the outside, a person may think that a large part of a music program is focused on preparing for concerts and performing during school year. There are learning goals and competencies to be met along the way. What I call practicing and getting ready for a show really has a very strong academic component to it, namely developing and refining musical techniques and work for presentation. I'd like to rely on the director of curriculum, Dr. Katie Hills, our music teacher, Mr. Peter McDonald, and some of our fourth grade students to share the academic view of music instruction a bit more eloquently than I can. Thank you.
So I'd like to introduce the fourth grade. We had a small class this year, even a little smaller this evening, which is going to have some dangers to learning to that. Well, thank you. That was called "Stand or Stand." And I'd like to let you know that last year, in fourth grade, we developed a number of skills, learned how to do music. And so we played a variety of rhythms last year, so we're going to play those just in composition. This next song is called "For the Umbrella." Well, thank you. We have developing a number of skills this year. The first thing is the correct posture. And the correct audio, which is basically recorded enough. The second would be learning the correct rhythms for the notes. And the third thing would be correlating our feet with our tops. So our next song... It's called "Couchy Tail and Puppy Dunks." Well, typically, it's marked before the learn, about six or seven hours on recording, before volume three, so whatever the game here. And we'd like to demonstrate that with hot cross buns featuring a couple more songs.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDonald. Thank you, the fourth grade students. And so I'll hear that all day, every day, and I'll say, oh, yeah, music is going on. Oh, yeah, kids are practicing. But no, they are refining and developing their musical techniques for performance. And it's a lot of fun. Fourth graders, you did a great job. Thank you very much for sharing all that. And I think if I may invite you to, if you and your families would like to leave, you may. If you'd like to stay, you may. Mr. McDonald, thanks very much for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Really wonderful. I gotta say, the way these four play together so well, I can tell that it's been a long practice. Okay, I'd like to move on to approving the minutes. First, at the September 11th school board meeting, accept the motion.
I have one, and it's dramatical. Under public input, under missed clause input assessments, that's all. That's all. So unless anyone else has anything on it, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with that amendment.
Just the NHDOE is NHD now.
Okay. Can you use the microphone so people can hear you? Thank you.
Uh, thank you, thank you very much. NHDOE, under the Life Grow Grant Project, NHDOE is NHDD now. Page three, under the Life Grow Grant Project. Just the mic right here.
Okay, I'll observe that you have not yet had a second on the motion.
Second.
Second by the board again. Any other comments?
Chair, I have a change of opinion.
Is Mr. Pickford or Eric Higginson?
Thank you.
I'll check it.
Under members absent, that's Tom Pickford, who wrote my last sentence. I did the plea message and the text message, explaining that my wife was very sick at the time that day, and got suspended by absence.
Okay. Okay, they give that?
Yes, excuse.
Excuse, yes. I am not sure of my recollection as to whether Chairman Whitmer had made that statement at the time, and it just didn't get recorded, but we can add at this point, I can see no reason why it wouldn't be excused. Any other comments, corrections, additions? Okay, hearing none, and I will ask for a vote to accept the minutes as corrected and amended. Tom, have you a...
I vote aye.
Brody?
Aye.
To point of order, as you were having that meeting, would be appropriate for you to abstain.
I will retire my aye, because I wouldn't abstain.
Okay, sorry. I should have come. Brody, you said yes?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Manning?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlie?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, and Mr. Whitmer is not present. Okay. I'd like to move on to the minutes of September 21st, the Academic Affairs Committee meeting. Not sure who all was involved there, but would you like to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the minutes of September 21st, Academic Affairs Committee meeting.
Do we have a second from the committee members?
I have a second.
Okay, Mary? Any comments? Just to refresh my memory, the members of the committee that were present were Charlie, Mary, Brody, and Dr. Manning. Okay, thank you.
What do you think, Patrick?
Very important, yes. The envy of Mary. Okay, no comments on it. I'll call for a vote. Brody?
Aye.
Dr. Manning?
Yep.
Mary?
Yes.
And Charlie?
Aye.
Minutes are accepted. Okay, per the request of superintendent, I'll turn the mic over to you for your... Oh, you want me to do that first? Yeah. Just kidding.
Mr. Chair, I'm putting forward a motion to approve the manifest from September 11th, 2023.
Okay. Sounds good.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Moved by Brody, seconded by Dr. Manning. Okay, so for the record, for the September manifest, it's a total of $2,568,956.79. That is the motion that we are moving on. No questions or comments? Call for the vote. Hammond?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie? Stephanie, hello?
Point of order, that was last month's, you read this month's manifest. I put last month on it, so last month is the $5,032,000.
Sorry. Let's back up. And the reason we're doing this, and it's a little bit unusual, is because Kathy Woodson's not present at that meeting, so we're doing a little catch-up on this. So that's just a little housekeeping. Excuse me for confusing the two. So going back to square one, the total on that is $5,032,951.18. I assume that the motions and seconds will still be appropriate, but I will begin the voting again. Tom?
Aye.
Hey, Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Manning?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye as well. Okay. My apologies. Okay, moving on to the next manifest, which is the current one. And I had read the total, but for the record, again, it was $2,568,956.79. That's for the manifest of 10/2.
So move to accept the manifest of October 2nd, 2023.
Okay. Okay. Again, the dynamic duo of Brody and Dr. Manning. If there are no questions or comments on that, okay, we'll vote to accept. Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Manning?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlie?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye as well. Now, I will deal the microphone to our superintendent for her requested report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, point of order, does this mean we'll have public input after that?
Yes. Okay, got it, thank you. This is a statement regarding the event at the Kingswood Art Center to provide the community with additional information. The Trump presidential campaign has reserved the Kingswood Art Center for Monday, October 9th, 2023. The program is scheduled to begin at 10:30 a.m., followed by the candidate's speech at noon, which will conclude by 1:30 p.m. We anticipate increased activity and will grow as a result. The campaign will make this event public today, Monday, October 2nd, 2023. We consider all factors but prioritize safety when we have a rental request. In this instance, there were several dates that were denied prior to the date that was confirmed. We held firmly to not have student activity in any building or on any field on the complex or at present in the school in order to agree to this particular rental. Monday, October 9th is a holiday, therefore, school is not in session. There will be no student activities until 4:00 p.m. that day. As of 1:30 p.m., all parties agree to vacate the premises. Security will vacate the premises of any additional individuals. Local, state, and federal safety and security officials, including Secret Service, as well as GWRTC employees, will be on site during the preparations and the event itself to ensure a smooth and secure process. The vendor use agreement requires the vendor to... This particular contract to keep in full force and effect a comprehensive general liability insurance policy, including public liability and property damage covering its activities hereunder in an amount not less than $1 million. Finally, this is not today's school sponsored event. We neither endorse nor deny any particular individual or organization based on political beliefs when evaluating rental requests. The Art Center is available for organizations to rent. It's important to note that the district is committed to considering and permitting rental agreements in the spirit of neutrality. For example, in recent years, both Pete Buttigieg and Bernie Sanders held events at the Kingswood Art Center. We believe in freedom of speech across the district, to include our classrooms, our libraries, and our rental practices. Thank you. We will post this statement on the board's side.
Thank you. Okay, this is our period for public input. Remind people that it is slated to be fifteen minutes, three minutes per person if you could, and most extended by the vote of the board. We'd ask folks to come up to the microphone up here at the lectern, so you can be heard, and ask people to be...
Mr. Chairman, could I? I just had a question about the previous statement, just really brief, just a logistical one before we get to the public. But I don't know where the appropriate place to ask it.
You want me to entertain them at this time?
I'll find that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I will allow that question.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. I was only wondering, I assume there'll be counter protesters? Will there be a place designated for that, or is that considered logistically? Because I know the city of Manchester is hosted rallies typically for safety reasons, to make sure there isn't kind of, you know, any kind of fighting or arguing or increased tensions.
That will all be coordinated by local, state officials, law enforcement, and Secret Service.
Okay, so the police force will handle all of that?
Yes.
Okay, and I assume they will handle that at the city. Thank you. That's all, sorry. And it means that it's written to Mr. Chairman.
Probably, very good question. I assume you'll be there to maintain order anyways. Kidding, just kidding. So going back to my spiel on public input, fifteen minutes, three minutes per person if you would. Ask that people to be respectful, and that it not be about personality so much as about issues. Please come to the microphone, so everybody can hear you clearly. And that's it. Invite you up. Oh, and state your name and the town you are from. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ben, I'm from Wolfboro, and I assume you probably knew I was coming this evening, but I first want to talk about not being able to move another issue that has been an issue since the Art Center was built, and the last superintendent and the board's long way have ignored an issue and something that really needs to be addressed. And noticing on the agenda tonight that we are finally welcoming and addressing breastfeeding is absolutely fabulous. But there's another issue that our Art Center has not addressed all these years. We have a changing table in the women's room at the Art Center. We do not have a changing table in the boys' room at the Art Center. So the girls, day after day, go into the Art Center, and they go into their bathroom, and they're learning right from an early age that their job is to change the diapers, handle the baby. At the same time, our boys are entering their bathroom, and they're learning that's not their job, that's not in their description, and that's not there for them. But because we do rent out the Art Center, there's another issue. We have parents who come to the functions to come see their children, and they have younger children. And if a father comes with his younger children, a father can't walk into the bathroom and change their baby. And this has been prevalent since we built the Art Center, and I think it's time we enter, you know, thirty years ago and put that changing table in the boys' room. So I really hope that the board and our community will consider putting that in, because it is doing a disservice to our fathers who show up with their babies and have no way to change the babies. Okay, that said, let's address the other thing. So I, for one, am also very much for our First Amendment rights. And I applaud that we open up our center. We have "we" the people there last summer, and that's before your time, but that was also very heavily of right group. We've had left, we've had right, we've had center groups there. I'm going to read the First Amendment. "Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise therefore, or bridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of people peacefully to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." I'm here for the last part, to petition the government for a redress of grievances. Reason I have this grievance is because the prior part of this is for people peacefully to assemble. Now, part of that assembly is that people show up. We're giving a permit out to a group that is known to not pay the bills. And it doesn't matter whether they have liability insurance or not. There are bills that are going to be approved by us, that our town's going to approve in Wolfboro, and that our school district's going to approve. Does the school board know right now that this petition, they have not addressed Wolfboro PD, and asked Wolfboro PD to come and be on site and pay the Wolfboro Police Department for services? Okay, it's fifteen minutes. Anyone want to kick me off the mic? It's fifteen minutes. Thanks.
Who would ask for a subcommittee?
Okay, I'll go quickly. Albuquerque, New Mexico, is owed $211,175. Spokane, Washington, they're owed $65,124. Burlington, Vermont, $8,464. Mississauga, Arizona, Erie, Pennsylvania, Green Bay, Wisconsin, they're up to $841, $219 between them. Four years after the 2016 rallies, Trump still had fourteen outstanding bills totaling $1.82 million. Now, this is outside of liability. I'll skip ahead. El Paso, Texas, is owed $470,417.05. After they haven't paid the bill all these years, they're now up to $560,000. As a citizen, I'm here asking that we require a deposit minimum of $34,000, where his rallies are in small places equivalent to ours, then general bills $34,000 when they leave. However, El Paso, Texas, if we're looking at them, they owe the committee $560,000. However, El Paso, Texas, if we're looking at them, they owe the committee $560,000. We need to require a deposit. That's much more. How much is our deposit, $4,000 for the event, or have they given... I mean, we don't know any of these figures, but that is public yet. So the Governor Wabba's school board on your website says, "In accordance with the requirements of federal and state laws and the regulations that implement those laws, hereby formally declares that it is the policy of the board in its actions and those of its employees that there shall be no discrimination on the basis of age, sex, race, creed, religion, color, marital status, physical or mental disability, racial origin, or sexual orientation for employment in, participation in, or the admission slash access or operation and administration of any educational program or activity in the district." I think we all know throughout the years some of the things that Trump has said and done that are racist, that are bigoted, that are anti-LGBT community, right down to actually disallowing transgender people from being in our military. So we have actions showing, and I don't want to... are the kids in the room? I'm not going to go through some of the quotes, but if you'd like to...
Can I speak to the chair back enough still?
Okay, I'm having it up right now. I hope your policy and your... for the complex, however, there's no way for sort of a white person like myself to figure out how much we pay. I really hope that the permit is paid. I really hope that all those materials will be made accessible to the public so we know what our costs really financially will be. And again, the Wolfboro Police Department has not been contacted to provide any type of security for this event. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Someone else? If you could state your name and the town you are from, sir.
My name is Jerry Hess, Wolfboro, and I was here at the last meeting, and I said that I want to help. I went home, I've been writing articles in the paper for about a year and a half, and I never wrote one before a Republican got mad and criticized President Biden for wrong things. Well, anyways, I'd like to talk to someone in the end here and help some ideas to minimize some of the bitching that's unfounded. I don't know the lady, I'm not sure whether she was making a positive statement to save money, but it's just under my criticism, and it's the same thing I heard the last And we have a lot of problems in the country. Schools are having a lot of problems, and there is a group, I'm sure, that is trying to take over the schools and do charter schools, which I'm against. I'll let it go for now, but again, as I said last time, I wish people saw how much you guys are doing, and believe the amount of work, all right? And instead of criticizing, someone made the suggestion last time to the effect that if you have questions, go in and see the building people, and just go into these buildings, and you see the amount of work the kids are doing and the teachers are doing. And there's too many alt-right people, I'll use that term, that are looking for power and money, and I'm not happy about it. I'm very likely to pay with democracy, and I don't want my kids and their grandkids growing up in a dictatorship, and I don't want charter schools unless they're very, very clearly identified. And I'd like to know, the money going out on charter schools, are there people receiving this money, using it for the reasons they got it? I'm a little alluded. Anyways, I'd like to talk to someone after the meeting. It'll only be through office. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll congratulate you on talking for exactly three minutes. It's a rare skill. Anyone else like to address the board? Okay, well, we will have another period for public input at the end of the meeting, so if you can include observations, you'll have a second chance at it. I'd like to call for the Student Representative Report, Elliot Kiesler. Grab the mic, please.
Thank you, everybody. It's good to be back in this building again. I came to this school from first to fourth grade, and it's just, you know, great to be back in here and remember a lot of stuff I did here, but that's all besides the point. Here is the Student Representative Report for this month. Obviously, the biggest event coming up at our school is the Homecoming that's going to be next week. It's just a brief rundown of some of the athletic games. On Monday, boys soccer will be playing at Spalding. Girls soccer will have their scene tonight at home versus Spalding. On Tuesday, field hockey will be playing at John Stark. On Wednesday, volleyball will be going against Plymouth, and boys soccer will be at home versus Milford. On Thursday, girls soccer will be going against Merrimack Valley, and on Friday, boys soccer will be playing Plymouth. And that game will be back-to-back with the football game against Stevens, that is their homecoming game, and their scene tonight. And volleyball will have the league game at Wintaswam. Still a bit of a highlight for some of the teams that are doing well, boys soccer currently sitting at 5-2-2, obviously looking to defend the very nice season they had last year. Boys soccer currently 7-3. Moving over to the Art Center part of things, Music Department will be having their match or sale fundraiser this Saturday, the 7th. They are raising money for their field trip to New York City in the spring. They are looking to see a couple of live shows from some musicians and obviously see a couple of shows on Broadway. Also looking to extend that field trip as an opportunity for the theater program. Also, within the Music Department, they will be having their first concert of the year, nicknamed Kingswood Stock, obviously in homage to the famous '60s music event. That would be October 19th. It will feature two performances from the high school choir, a couple songs done by the jazz band, and then several members of the community will be giving solo performances, and a couple of students who have formed their own bands will be performing. The Theater Department, just a reminder, Peary and the Beast will be going out on November 17th, 18th, and 19th. There will be performances at 7:00 p.m. on 17th and 18th, and Matt Lays at 2:00 p.m. on the 18th and 19th. Several members of the cast of Peary and the Beast will be performing solo numbers at Kingswood Stock, including myself. Obviously, also coming next week with Homecoming will be our Spirit Week activities. Tuesday, the dress-up theme will be Baggy Clothes Day. On Wednesday, we will have Student-Teacher Swap Day, which is basically swap day and dress code for the students and teachers. On Thursday, we will have Kingswood Color Day, just as much green and white as you can fit on your body. And on Friday, we will, of course, have Class Color Day. Also on Friday, we will have the presentation of each class's decorated hallways. Themes this year, the seniors have chosen to do a beach theme, the juniors have chosen to do the wild west, the sophomores have chosen a haunted house theme, and the freshmen going a bit of a unexpected returns construction site, not one I've seen before, but hey, it'll be good. Overall, the attitudes in the building seem to be very strong, growing gains, but that's to be respected with the beginning of the year. Things seem to be going very well. And on behalf of the student body, I would just like to thank Principal Fanny Lari on a very nice first month of the kid's term as college principal. That is all I have, if anybody has any questions.
Well, that was a very vigorous report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Wow. And for all of us young people here, what music event were you referring to? The '60s, what? Okay. Were your parents even born then?
No.
All right, I'd like to turn the mic over to our superintendent for her report.
Thank you. And once again, I have the challenge to follow our student rep. Of course. Okay, so first, I don't want to cover our agenda. First, superintendent district update. I'll just highlight a few items that I included. First, enrollment. So we included some enrollment numbers here. Some schools experienced increases in their student population as compared to previous year, including Harpenter, Eppingham, the High School in Osiphe. Others have seen slight decreases, Crescent Lake, Middle School, New Durham, and Tufton Borough. Overall, the total student enrollment across the district has increased from 2,079 students in 2021 to 2,199 students in 2022, and has remained consistent at 2,199 in 2023. Also, in my district update, just a welcome back to all the schools. We have successful, bustling, positive open houses in all of our schools, incredible turnout, a heartwarming and positive energy that filled the hallways. And I included a picture of a Crescent Lake fall mom fundraiser that they conveniently coordinated with her open house, so their front lawn is covered with mom's beautiful site. And I can segue into the next item, winter weather updates. So not that it's happening, this is a beautiful week, but it's only prudent to share human weather procedures. So I have those in the district update. I also included the message, this was sent to all families last Friday in our monthly newsletter from SAU. So as always, we make very careful decisions when we decide to delay or cancel school. And per the board vote last year, we will hold traditional snow days, no remote learning, and in-person learning is canceled. So all of those details are there in that letter and in policy, and hopefully they won't have to use them for quite some time. Any questions?
I was just wondering if you could include, at least for future reference, the Wolfboro Dispatch, because we have a road dispatch box separate from the counties. So I think you can be provided...
I can share, yes.
So that the Wolfboro...
The process is that our transportation coordinator calls the road agents for every town, certainly, and we receive that information. And with gathering all of that information, she and I talk at it off 4:15 in the morning and decide what to do based on that information, but certainly we'll throw dispatch to be included, so I'll check that. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I shall proceed. Budget timeline. So the tentative budget preparation dates for our internal process, the administrative team meets with myself and our business administrator on October 18th, 19th, and 20th. So those are meetings that Capio and I hold with each principal. The finance committee will have their usual three-evening meetings on November 14th, 15th, and 16th. That's Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday at Crescent Lake at 6:00 p.m. each evening. We bring a proposed budget to the school board in December, and we bring it to the Board for Adoption vote in January. The deliberative date this year is... Where is that? Oh, thank you, February 3rd, Saturday, February 3rd at 10:00 a.m. And then voting will be Tuesday, March 12th. Any questions about the budget timeline?
Yes. Lady Chair.
I'm wondering if the budget committee would consider a fourth meeting to review all personnel changes and their budgetary impact, since that was a pretty significant discussion last year, if there...
What I would say to that is it's certainly the finance committee's prerogative to, you know, at the end of their three meetings, to schedule any additional meetings that they feel are necessary, could be for personnel, could be for another topic. But I would leave that to the committee based on their findings of those three meetings.
I think if you find that helpful, I'll give it to you.
You could also just reach out to Jan, she should share that committee.
I consider that essential, so... Yes, because it's such a huge part of our budget and those changes and their impact on the budget, particularly because we have grant-funded positions and incorporation of funds, dissolution of positions, collapsing, expanding, things like that. They all have an impact on our largest line item on the budget, which is personnel, so...
We're prioritizing the presentation this year for personnel, so it will look different than this year. Perfect. Any other questions? Okay, next, field trips. This is information for the board for field trip policy that I share overland and/or out-of-state field trips, so I have two to share. First, the aforementioned trip, the end of the school year, this is in May, the Music Department overland trip to New York City, four-day, three-minute trip, competition and educational workshop. This will be May 16th through May 19th, 2024. There are very... There's an explanation on the back of that field trip form. They're very involved in fundraising, as we've heard earlier in student report reports, and very active in making that accessible to all students in chorus and band. The other field trip, bringing to the board's attention, is one for New Durham School, grade six. This is destination, the Ecology School in Satcom, Maine. This will be in June, June 4th through 7th, and the educational value is to reinforce the lessons in ecology that students had in fifth grade, studying river, farm, field, and forest habits. Students learn about sustainability through growing food, serving energy, and building community by nourishing the ecosystem in which we live. Students live, learn, work, and play, and take responsibility for themselves. So that is happening in Virginia. Sounds like a fantastic trip. Shall I proceed? Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the next item, two more items in the superintendent report, are the Let Grow surveys. So this is a project I brought to the board last month, and this month we have the student permission, the parent permission lecture, there's students to participate, and the surveys. So this requires an action by the board to allow the New Durham School to use these surveys for students who are participating in the Let Grow project by permission of their parents. So you can see in the packet, there are surveys for students and teachers and parents, so you are really only voting on the student surveys. We have the teacher and parent in here for word information.
Motion to be in order, Mr. Chair.
I'd recognize, remedy a motion to accept the... Which item do you want to make a motion on?
To accept the Let Grow student surveys at New Durham Public...
All right, I'm glad to accept the motion. And I'm glad you would like to make it.
I'd just make it.
Do we have a second?
Second. If you could have a conference chair.
Discussion, maybe for a big discussion on the item? Yeah, questions, comments, please use the microphone.
I shall. One question I have, and I'm not sure if there's anybody here who can answer it, but if this will be to supplement or supplant the current homework assignments?
but if this will be to supplement or supplant the current homework assignments in reading or math. So that's a question I have, because that's not clear in the letter, whether this is something additional or something in lieu of toward that end. I'm not exactly sure if this letter is requesting participation, requesting permission to participate in the program or just the survey aspect. So the result would be if parents say they don't want to participate in this, if the teacher would then have to differentiate homework assignments based on previous permission, would have a negative curriculum and instruction. So those are a couple of really important questions that I would want answered in this letter. And the other piece is relative to the student survey. If this is intended to be administered K six, I'm wondering how kindergartners will read and respond to the twenty items, if they will be supported in some way. Kindergarten through six.
Oh, this one.
Sorry, so I didn't realize that the student surveys were different for... I can't see because it's over the staple. K two versus three, four. And is there a different one for five, six? Because the program is listed as K six. Okay, so Heather is telling me that the student survey that is listed as three, four is actually three, six.
I believe it's three, five, I'm not sure six, three is doing it, because they already have a homework regimen, which is a great way to say it, but they already sort of have a system in place. So I believe this would be K five and the third, the third and fourth framework will actually go through their field check.
Okay, thank you for that. Do you have any clarity on the other questions that I've asked?
So in terms of whether this...
I'm sorry, you want to address someone who has questions? So specifically, the questions are... So to what grades are, what grades are pertinent to the page that says at the top in bold, CHS, because I can't, I didn't hear. What grades are those, because the staple is over the...
That's K two.
That's K two, okay, thank you. Yes, K two, and the one that says students three through four would actually be three through five.
Three through four is supposed to be three through five.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, I saw those markings online. I just wanted to, I mean, I think it's pretty clear to me that by signing the letter or opting into the program, because it says at the bottom there where the parent signed opting out, that was as I parent of, and then the student's name and grade, the grade you can give my permissions for the Let Grow program for the full year, I understand, and I will be asked to complete a short survey a few times this year to gauge outcomes. And to me, it seemed like the survey, that's part of, you're sending this letter, you're agreeing to do the survey, but it's also participation in the program. But the next one says, you know, I parent of, student name and grade, grade number, I'm choosing to opt out of this program. I felt like it was pretty explicit.
So the reason why I'm asking is, I'm asking if it says supplement versus supplant. So is it supplementing the homework that's already going to be given? And will there be, what is the alternative if a parent says I'm opting out? And that's not clear in the letter, is what I'm saying. And I think it should be made clear, if they opt out, what does that mean for their child for homework?
Most of our primary levels, the homework is more of a menu option anyway. So it is, there's staying at home, and there's staying over the course of the week. It could be playing a game with a family member, read a story or read a story to somebody. So a lot of it is the same types of activities. Some of them look at her preparing a snack, they're trying to encourage more independent types of activities to encourage student independence. Students will still have the, you know, will still be encouraged to do a lot of these activities, even if they're not, if they're not being graded on them in any way. It's not going to hurt them if they are not participating in them. It's really just more of a chance to collect the data outside to see are some of these activities helping to improve student independence. So reading a nightly book would still be an option in many cases. Going and playing a sport is an option for, you know, homework.
Right. Because the, well, so in that respect, normally we would not be approving homework choice. That's not typical, so that's why it's, we're not really approving the program itself, we're approving the administration of the survey specifically. I just want the board to be clear on that this way. So it's not up to us whether or not this, you know, if parents want to opt in. I think that just needs to be clear about, like you said, what parents' options are, if they do have options, or if this is going to be administered to everybody because it's so similar to what they're already doing.
It is very similar.
So I just want to see reading continue, that's important.
Yes, reading is a second one that will continue, including other things, you know, we're encouraging students to get outside and, you know, exercise or be healthy. It's just many of them are going to say, how can we do this to independence, rather than a parent, you know, handholding their child this way?
Which just what I understand, so this is replacing current homework requirements? Or is it just very similar to current homework requirements?
It's very similar and also blended. So there's still going to be understanding that, you know, even if, even if reading is on it, the understanding is just, even if you're opting out of the survey component, you're still expecting your student to read when they are at home. Because so much of it overlaps with some of the activities that Let Grow encourages.
So is there still going to be homework, like, for example, students having to study spelling words, fact tables for math, if students just want to...
Yes.
That's what I'm understanding, okay.
But at the elementary level, you have to understand that they're not, you don't go home with a sheet every single night that says, do this, do this, do this, do this, and check off, and check, and check off. It's really more, they're looking at it at a week, at a week's span, or sometimes two weeks' span, saying, these are some of, these are some of the things that we were practicing in school. These are some of the things we recommend that you do. Fit it into your, into your family's schedule in a way that makes sense, because families are very different in terms of what they have to do every night. But there's still the expectation that students are reading, that they're practicing. It might be that they're playing math, they're not sitting and doing, you know, traditional worksheets that we may have done when we were younger. We have, we send home, you know, we call them our red green work lists for spelling. So there's still understanding that students are juniors, but it's, we're going to add some independent options as well to promote that. Can I just be clarified? It's an important point that the agenda item is Let Grow surveys. So the board votes on non-academic surveys for students. So it's true, it's not necessarily voting on the program itself. We provided this letter as some context, some information for the board, because it's important, you know, for you to know that it's for parents to opt in. But it's really here just to provide extra context and information for the board. Really, the board is voting on the surveys, the first two surveys only.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I would recommend this letter be revised so that that's clear that parents are provided consent to be surveyed, and for their student to be surveyed, and that the program we implemented, it's with the permissions for the survey.
Yes, Tom.
So I'm on the lines of making clear what expectations are at the end of signature. Things to spec up to the I parent's homes though, we might wish support of the Let Grow program. What are you expecting of them for support?
So that is in answering the surveys. So as students are starting to do these independent choice activities outside of school, and getting support from in-school to do them, that parents are hopefully, the idea that they're seeing their students take on more independent things beyond the scope of these activities. And that includes everything from just choosing to do something independently, deciding to go for a walk, you know, or, but also that they are, it's a mindset as well. So in terms of students getting more confidence in themselves, like, I can prepare a healthy snack for my family, I don't have to come home and rely on somebody else to do it. So it's really increasing independence and independent mindset among our, our students.
Okay, well, I agree with Stephanie, I think there is some clarification. And in my sentence, I'm sure you can take care of that. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, observations? Good to get to this point, and just to clarify, we are voting on the survey, to approve the survey. Okay, if there are no other questions, I'll call for the vote. Just to reiterate, the motion was made by Rodney, seconded by Dr. Manning. How do you vote, Tom?
Aye.
Rodney?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Oh, yes, sir. Mr. Dr. Manning?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlie?
Aye.
Dean?
Yes.
Cheer goes aye as well, thank you very much. And we have another item there.
Yes, thank you. Last item is a presentation, oral language from the high school. It is an application for Wood Estate Expendable Trust Fund. All right, how's that feeling, ready, Gary? Okay. So we offer tonight to present to you and to ask for, who will for some funds from Wood State to help us, to help us fund our KRHS immersion trip to Sevilla State. This would be a two-week immersion trip at the end of June for a group of sixteen students to participate in homestays, language classes, and cultural activities through this trip. So I'm going to tell you guys just a little bit about the trip, and then a little bit about how we would like to use the funds. So the trip is through a school called Centro Mogalewa, and they offer Spanish courses and programs like this in Sevilla. The trip would be for students who have completed Spanish III by the end of this school year, because the classes that they would be participating in are intermediate level classes. And students from around the world also attended this program last year during that summer session. We had about ninety-one students participating. So our students would be joining with students from the United States and possibly other countries as well to participate in these classes. And just a few things that the trip would include, there would be three hours of Spanish class per day. Really, the thing that stood out to me about this program is that it is a two-week homestay. And that's something that, as I was looking for programs, we felt homestays were really an important way for students to connect and learn intercultural competence. And a lot of programs out there have shorter homestays, like four or five days, but this was really two weeks spending in a home with a Spanish-speaking family is a really unique experience for students to potentially have. They'd also be eating meals in their homestay family and doing cultural activities at the school and in and around Sevilla during their time there. And also, there is, I believe, a trip to Portugal planned as well, since Sevilla is really close to the border. So there's also that opportunity to get to see an additional country in this trip. And so I do have, if anyone's interested, I could pronounce some detail that I don't know what we can do. And we're, we're asking for some help is in the cost of the trip, because as we were planning, the program fee is actually pretty reasonable, but in over the last couple of months, international airfare has gone a lot, especially for international travel to Europe during summer months. So our estimated airfare, the program fee is three thousand dollars for the two weeks, and the airfare is approximately one thousand seven hundred dollars. So that was a really huge expense that is a little bit more than we were expecting, but also a little bit out of our control. So the approximate cost of the trip was about four thousand seven hundred dollars. It did look around at other programs as well that were a little bit cheaper, but a lot of them didn't have that homestay component. And actually, because of the length of this trip, the cost per day is actually still less than a lot of the tour companies out there that offer a little bit cheaper programs. So, and we are looking at doing some fundraising as well. But with such a big trip cost, we thought we'd try to get some, a little bit more funding to help our students bring that cost down. So, that's a little bit about the trip. So we, in our proposal, we're requesting a total amount of thirty-six thousand dollars, which would be about two thousand dollars per student to offset the cost of that airfare, and to reduce the cost of the trip to three thousand dollars per student for that trip. And we would like to, the, the cost of the airfare is still kind of up in the air because they do have some quotes in the travel agents, but some of them are expiring, and so, and they need to get some new quotes as we try to finalize how these students are going to be able to participate in this trip. So if we did have any remaining amount after paying for everyone's airfare, we would like to give some scholarships based on financial need to some students who are interested in participating, but the cost is too much for their families. And I actually invited a couple of students here to speak to you tonight that would be directly impacted by this financial need scholarships. They are a couple of seniors, and would really like to participate in this trip, so I'm going to tell you a little bit about themselves. This is Isabella in red silk turtan. So, hi.
Good evening, school board members. I'm Isabella.
And I'm Lydia Paul.
And we are students at KRHS. We are grateful to have the opportunity to speak with you about funding for the Spanish moving trip. We believe that students who are passionate, eager to learn the language, should have a chance to attend this trip, no matter the financial situation.
We hope you understand how hard we think funding is for this wonderful opportunity to further connect with the language, culture, and people of Spanish-speaking countries. Isabella and I have personally benefited from scholarships, and we wouldn't have had the same access to experiences without them. Thank you for your time, we hope you'll consider providing funding for all of this upcoming trip from Peru as well.
Thank you, girls. So yeah, so just to kind of highlight a couple of things that these girls said, there are a lot of students who are interested in this experience. We did hold an informational meeting, and we had about forty-five students come to it. So there are a lot of students who want these types of trips, who want these experiences, and we're trying to find a way to provide that for as many students as we can. Our priority is to, we do have kind of a cap at... Our priority is to, we do have kind of a cap at sixteen students. We're going to have two chaperones. And we are looking at accepting applications right now from our students who are interested. And we do give priority to students who have completed AP. So we do have some seniors that have completed AP. These ones are going to be taking AP in the spring semester. And then we consider applications based on essays and criteria based on how many levels of Spanish they've taken. So that is just a little bit about our timeline. We are, like I said, we had an informational meeting. We're accepting applications right now. And we're hoping to finish up our application process this week and to be able to start telling students who has been accepted to the trip. And hopefully, and hoping to, if we do receive some funding, announce to students who maybe haven't applied yet because that is kind of their deciding factor, they're really interested but they're not able to pay, especially for that airfare. Hoping to kind of announce that and then extend the deadline a little bit to offer that, that hopefully a little bit lower price to them as we consider and hopefully get more applications and more interest. So that is all I have for you guys. Thank you so much for listening. And do you have any questions?
Mr. Baker, could you use the microphone, please?
All right. When it comes to the scholarships, have you had, have you had students apply already but have to draw because they didn't have the money? Do you have any idea of how many or how much scholarship money you really paid?
Well, the, most of our students just kind of, I kind of said, you know, apply if you are really seriously considering this. And since we don't have, we didn't have any scholarship money at the time, I just said like, you know, apply if you can commit to the trip. But I do, you know, just from talking to students at first, I'm saying, oh, you know, I really want to go. But it's like, I worked all summer and that's like even more than I've been able to save and all of that, you know, here's working. And so I've heard, you know, students make those kind of comments and I've talked to some parents and I do have an idea of at least three students who are, who really need some financial-based scholarships. And then just kind of a general like, oh, that's, you know, kind of expensive. I don't know if my family can swing that. So that's why we're kind of looking for if the trust would be able to pay for the airfare. That would take a huge burden off of, of the families.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, just wondering if the Wood Estate Fund was on our website? Available to you?
I know the applications on the website because that's where I was able to download it from.
I'm sorry, I'm interested.
Um, I know the application to apply for the Wood Estate is on the website because that's where I got all these paperwork from.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I have a question, I have a question for Kathy.
Yeah.
Well, one, I think you can clarify, but I believe the Wood Estate is controlled by the town of Wolfboro, Wolfboro trustees of the trust fund?
They hold the money, but you didn't have a policy regarding it.
Yeah, we have a policy for having it.
Yeah.
And my question, my, my next question was going to be, we only get the full certain amount of interest? Yeah, well, I know it's three percent. What is that amount this year? Would this take up from any future programs that people want to come forward?
It's per year, so as the balance decreases, the three percent gets smaller. And I, at the top of my head, I, I don't have the exact amount. I believe it's over a hundred thousand dollars in that account. And that's published every year on the annual report.
Yeah, I think it would just be good that we'd be informed about how much.
Absolutely.
Yeah, how much we have. So then we're allocating this, so we know what, how much we have left in case other requests ever does come up.
And typically, we have the, gosh, I have, I'm blanking on it. Can't imagine, thank you.
And how much can imagine again this year?
Usually it's about, they asked about thirty-six hundred dollars per students.
Okay, so that's pretty, that's pretty good. And, and it's scheme of.
How many scholarships for this will go through this as well?
How much, how much do you usually, it usually is whatever we have to deliver, correct?
It depends on the year of the scholarship, but I think this past year was ten thousand, eleven thousand dollars in scholarship. So this is, yeah, this is substantial amount.
So if I may quickly, maybe more directly, is thirty-six thousand dollars potentially available?
I don't know.
And that's what they're asking for?
Oh, so I think it's.
So if I, let me, um.
So you said thirty-six thousand dollars isn't available or is available?
It's not.
It is.
Per policy is three percent. Per policy is.
So potentially it's more like three thousand dollars would be available.
Let me go, let me come on, I have my laptop. I didn't know how much the dollar amount is going to be to be on.
May I ask you a question? Is the three percent, is that from income or is that, uh, derives from the support of the trust?
From the balance.
So that's whatever it's currently.
As opposed to this, it's from the third capital.
So this, this one is going to, who gets more as we take them?
Yes, but the interest did come each year. A year ago it didn't do as well, but this past year didn't very well. So the, the balance increased all a little bit because of the added interest.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that.
I guess currently, if I may, Mr. Chen.
Yes, sir.
I guess currently, without, you know, we'll see Kathy get the numbers, without knowing the exact numbers and how much we're drawing down the trust and how much of this current interest we're going to be using that's been accrued. I, I don't know. I think, I think we should wait until we have those numbers. Kathy gets those, I think, and then we make a decision plan once it's clarified. But I wouldn't feel comfortable committing, you know, dollar amounts that we don't know if it's, you know, we don't know how much are you, how much of the trust fund we're utilizing.
Okay, well, I'm going to take a motion to table this item until the next meeting so we can get that information.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's what I was going to do. I don't think waiting among is going to make any difference. So I also would like to table the request until our next meeting so we can get more information.
Okay, with some link breaking information here, Kathy says she has her computer in the car. She'll get the information. I recommend we table this till later in the meeting and see if we can take action on that.
Oh, so I'll make a motion that we move this agenda into after the academic affairs committee report.
That should be plenty of time.
So would you like to, I can share?
I'll cover that.
Thanks. If I may, I would just like to speak on behalf of the student body, just to, but I won't take too much time to. I just know that I've heard a lot about this trip. I have a lot of friends who went on a similar trip last, last year. I lived there with Chris Dugan. It was a very positive experience. Everybody involved. They all learned a lot. And I heard basically nothing but good things from every single student who might have just went on that trip. And I just know that a trip like this, there was a lot of interest from them, obviously. As this can be told, saying there were a lot of people who showed up to the informational meeting that they had. But also, talking to them, I felt, or at least to people who I know who were at that meeting, their only reservation was the cost. And I think trips like this are incredibly important for the education of people, especially in my age, just because we don't get the most diversity, obviously, up here in our neck of the woods. So I think any opportunity that we have to send students to another culture, learn more about it, is a worthwhile investment. I don't have the numbers. I'm not going to ask anybody to put down any money right now. But I think if we can find a way to make this happen, it would absolutely be a worthwhile investment for our student body. And yeah, I just think if we can make it happen, I think it would be a positive change for everybody involved.
Okay, thank you for your, but the, the question before the board would be whether we are actually able to disperse those funds based on the limitations of the trust itself. So we have to answer that question.
Mr. Chen?
Yes.
I just would like to say that I think this, these types of trips in the past have been very beneficial, very worthwhile. And I would hope that if Kathy determines that there is inadequate money in, from, you know, our very specific amounts we're allowed to draw out of the fund, I would like to hope that we would still support this trip financially with, you know, finding, you know, finding some way, even though it wasn't technically budgeted for last year. I would hope that we could find a way to supplement whatever we're able to realize from the Wood Estate Fund to make sure that we can, we can satisfy this request. Which does not mean I'm opposed to taking this determination until after our academic affairs committee report. I just wanted to state that I was very much in support of this and funding it, however we're able to fund it.
Okay, thank you for your comment. So in the interest of time, if, if there's no other pressing question, or current statement.
Could I just add a little something? Sorry. You know, just since we're talking about the amount of funds available, in our request, we kind of like, went to like shoot for the stars. But any amount of funds that like are available would definitely make a big impact for our students. So even if it's not the full amount, anything would really be beneficial for us.
Ten bucks it is.
Mr. Chen?
Okay, then let's move on to our board.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, I mean, there's a motion on the floor. I mean, I think we'll, we'll get an answer. I, I saw in your, in the documents you provided to the board that were reviewed before the meeting, you showed our, you know, options, not just a strip or other trip. And, you know, obviously, we don't have to expend any of the requested. We can always expend a little more amount. That's within the policy parameters of the trust. So we'll get the answer.
Okay.
Okay, very good. All right, are we good to take a vote to table this till after academic affairs here, a little later in the program? Okay, all right, a call for the vote. Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Manning?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. The item is tabled till later in our program. Any closing words?
I can close the superintendent's report, thank you.
Concluded in dramatic fashion. Okay, we'll go on to the chair's report. Okay, first item goes to Hampshire School Board Association. Jack Winder is our main participant in that. And I will mention, mostly for the benefit of board members, that there is the delegate conference coming up. And though I believe it hasn't really been mentioned in great detail, even though Jack is our delegate, it is open to other members to attend. They just wouldn't be voting members. So if you have an interest in seeing what goes on at the Hampshire School Board Association meeting, ask Jack about it. And you also may have noticed that the School Board Association has posted a number of notices for seminars. Check those out. Those are very informative. Strategic planning update.
Jim, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is Jack or you or the, are, are you guys still taking solicitation feedback on the resolutions that'll be coming out at the Hampshire School Board Association?
That would be a Jack question.
A Jack question.
I don't know whether he's closed the door or not.
Okay, do we know when, actually, I'll, I'll reach out to Jack directly.
Yeah, he's, he's still checking his email even though he's not at home.
Okay, Mary asked a question.
So she's getting ready.
I'm on deck.
Okay. Strategic planning update. Mary Chodgoff is our spokesperson. Take it away, Mary.
Thank you. So to the board, this is a recap of some information you're familiar with already having participated. But also activated to date on August eighth. And in response to Superintendent Ericellian's comprehensive entry plan listening and learning findings, the Governor-Webber Regional School District Leadership Team and School Board participated in a workshop facilitated by Mark Dolan, New Hampshire School Board Association's strategic planning consultant. The workshop was designed to bring leadership and board together for dialogue aimed at building a shared understanding about the present challenges of the school district along with a look ahead to future opportunities to be addressed through a strategic plan. The outcome of the workshop was this initial set of four focus areas. Academic achievement, creating a place of belonging, parent, family, and community communication and engagement, student wellness, and nutritional security. This important first step in the planning process serves as the foundation for the ongoing work conducted by the strategic planning team. The thirteen-member community and district representative team includes board members Stephen King, Jim Pittman, Sharla and Saddle, and myself. Also, I'm going to name the other members of this representative committee as well. Get down to the superintendent, of course, Caroline Ericellian. Assistant Superintendent Heather Cummings. Director of Curriculum and Instruction Katie Hilt. Principal Andrea Forney. Principal Kelly Colby Seedy. Head of School Counseling Laura Gray. English teacher, academic coordinator, Priscilla Rose. And parent representative, Michael Baker. It's an African name, Representative, Representative of Town, too, if you need to know. Other than that group of twelve adults, I'd like to add that there are six of which are also parents. This effort responds to the ongoing work of building a cooperative learner. And it will result in a plan that defines Governor-Webber Regional School District's mission and goals, streamline initiatives, and develop a focus for schools, administration, and school board, educators and teaching staff, and communities. Since August eighth, the planning team has met twice to define and identify challenges and opportunities associated with the four focus areas. Once finalized, focus areas will become strategic imperative, having the highest priority, and will guide the direction of the strategic, strategic plan. I knew I was going to stumble over that eventually. These ongoing dialogues are opportunities for meaningful, positive, and solution-focused conversations to provide clear direction on which to create a desired future. Team meetings will continue from October through December, whereby a final strategic plan will be presented to the school board for approval. The planning process will include a community engagement plan aimed at soliciting input from the community, student focus groups, developing a mission statement, values, and values beliefs, goal statements, and a one, two, and three years strategies for measures of success. And at this point, any questions from the board are welcome.
Could you provide us with the reports prior to meetings? Is there any way we can get the reports prior to the meeting and our meeting packet?
Okay, the question is whether we can get the reports prior to the meeting for those.
Hi, just want to bring that up to the group. I see no problem with that.
Are you asking about me writing this report, which you just read?
I assume that was a report.
Did you want me to write this report?
I, I assumed that that was a report from the strategic planning team. So I assumed, and, you know, I assumed that Mary has passed to create that report. And I'm just asking if we could get that report and write it prior to meetings, part of the, as for a meeting packet.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No other questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Baker?
My comment is, first, I'm going to start with the. My comment is first, I'm concerned with the makeup of the committee. I'm not concerned about the people on the committee at all. But fifty percent of the board members are employees, administrators, teachers, et cetera. I was understanding that this committee was going to be made up of stakeholders. I didn't think the stakeholders to be people who put the money forward and are expecting something in return. Taxpayers, residents, and so on. And I'm concerned that we don't have enough stakeholders upon this board. That we have a fifty percent, seventy, fifty switch, it also takes one person to switch. I certainly believe that the academic speeches and everybody else should come in and provide input to the board. But on the other side of the stakeholders who are putting money in, I know some people make the argument that the administration people are stakeholders. But as compared to taxpayers, they're going to pay one way or the other. There is not a size pay. And, and I'm not saying, I'm not downgrading our teachers or anybody else. We have a phenomenal staff. I'm just looking at how are we going to get the most accurate input? In that we have seven thousand people, tens of thousands, thousands of people. And unlike we have one husband and one parent. I know that there are people that are dual, dual-headed. But I would like to see the number of citizens increased on the committee.
Before your speech, Charlene, Mary, did you want to speak to any of those points?
Certainly, I think that's pivotal in the purpose of this, you know, started with the board and went down to this strategic group, that the input is that which follows. As I mentioned, the committee solicitation, input from the community, including students. And those decisions are, that's the next stage.
Okay, Superintendent, you have a speak.
Thank you, yes, it's an essential point, and our facilitator reminds us of this many times in every meeting, that the, the team is not creating the strategic plan. The team is the, oh, I'm sorry. The, the strategic planning team is not creating the strategic plan. The strategic planning team gathers the input from the stakeholders. So with that input, the, the team will gather it, they'll synthesize it, and then formulate it into goals and action plan for the board to vote on at the end. We're aiming for January, I believe, or February for the board to vote on it. However, the spokesperson to the board, Mary Schiller, she will provide an update to the full board every month. So the board is not, you know, just hearing the final product at the very end. But it's very important to know that the strategic planning team is not creating a strategic plan. Their, the first mission was to define the theme areas identified by the board. And the next step is to solicit input from students, from residents, from community families. Okay, that's all.
My, my only question is, we have a, a member who's a teacher, staff, and a member who's a member from the public. What was, how was that determined? Did we solicit applications from people or publicize anything to ask people who are interested in participating? How did that process work? Because I know most of the time when you have a process like this, you will solicit to the public who wants to be involved. And then you get maybe some resumes and some letters. And then, you know, you make a determination based on someone's experiences or what they value or how they want to be involved in the process. So I'm just kind of curious, because I've had a parent actually ask me, you know, they said, "I would love to put my hat in the ring and at least be considered." So how did that process work?
So as I described in detail about last meeting, the first step for board members, the facilitator spoke at the August 8th meeting and informed board members, "If you're interested in being on the strategic plan, please contact the superintendent." I had one board member indicate interest and she's on the team. From there, the chair and I were to identify additional members to be on the team. So we have a presentation of newer members, and I'll say members with more historical knowledge of the district. So that's how we identified board members. From there, we looked at the themes identified by the board. And we did two things. We wanted to have positions represented. We wanted to have stakeholder groups represented. We wanted to have different towns represented. But we also wanted to have people who could speak to the themes, those theme areas. So in that, we found, we identified two principals. One from Osiphe, one from Nudrum. We looked at educators from the high school, who can speak on a culture of belonging, who can speak to student wellness, the head of counseling. Let's see, who else is on the team? And then also a parent. A parent, this parent is someone who we know, who has a strong interest in student wellness and is active with our high school, work with, with our high school. So that's how we identified the strategic planning team.
So thank you.
Another question I have is.
Microphone, please, Tom.
I'm sorry.
Get a closer fit of that.
Thank you. I think, like, this part with discussion of the need to do for the board to hold a strategic planning meeting in consultation with the superintendent. The, what I attended to that first meeting, I do not believe is that. It was the first meeting of what is going to go on to be something bigger. I think that we have plenty of things to look at. I think, well, my primary concern is we're pushing this off, we've heard December, we've heard January, and the material is seven, seven months off. And I would hope that the board would think about going back to the strategic planning meeting that's required by the rules, three or two, I believe. And, and doing that and looking at the things that have been laid before us this year. And what are we going to do from now until the board comes up with those recommendations? I have no opposition to adopting the board's recommendations. But I think we've got a lot of work to do, and we can adopt those as it comes along. So I would hope that the board would go back, reconsider having a small, large strategic planning meeting in consultation with the superintendent. I think that's.
Thank you, Tom. Mary, did you have anything additional?
I, I don't know that I mentioned Beverly as being on, on this committee. And not being of the planning team, and I apologize for that here.
Charlene?
And I just wanted to let you know that after our last meeting, one of the team members took upon herself, and I greatly loved her, the initiative she took. She took it upon herself to conduct some of the, well, to conduct a survey of two of her classes of students. And so, you know, there, there is definitely going to be occasion for multiple incidents, incidences of outreach to solicit input. And, you know, so far, we already have a lot of good feedback from that, you know, that particular member or, or learning committee.
And if you don't mind, I'll just add to that, that it was not an official survey in that sense. It was really more of a classroom activity. That she did share the results with us, which was, was, I thought was interesting, but it was not a structured survey.
That concludes.
Okay. All good thoughts. As a member of that committee, I will say, I think we've had some very good discussions. And I'm optimistic that we're going to end up with some very good results as, as this evolves. Okay, I'll move on to correspondence. Expressions of congratulations were sent to Jennifer Goslin and the birth of her baby. Expresses of sympathy were sent to Annette Delanger, who's the Osiphe Center's School Counselor, Crystal Gonzalez, the Osiphe School Parent Educator, Judge Keaton, Kingswood High School Science Teacher, and myself, Freddie Lawson, my brother. Thank you very much for your thoughts. Okay, we're calling the committee reports and the long anticipated academic affairs report. Charlene, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. So all of you received in your packet a copy of our new and improved color-coded meeting and policy review schedule. And you also received a clarifying email from our superintendent about the slight change in how we're going to meet our obligations in adopting, withdrawing, and advising policies. You'll note that, well, you'll, you'll remember that in the past, first, first read has just been an occasion for, for me or whoever to remind everyone that, "Oh, hey, we have these policies to look at. Send your comments and questions and concerns and suggested edits to me or Heather." However, this did not allow the full board to really discuss the suggested edits, et cetera. So the way we're going to do it moving forward, which, you know, we're all made aware of, is that when we have a meeting, whenever we have policies for first read, what we're going to do is we're going to need you to bring your suggestions to the board meeting, and then we're going to have a discussion, and that would be the opportunity to bring your concerns. And then, after those have all been incorporated, you'll have another occasion to discuss the policies. When we have the second read and when policies are moved for a vote, then during that discussion period, you'll be able to weigh in. And then, then the vote is aboard on approving or not those policies. So I have a quick question. Is, is this schedule posted on our website? By any chance? Okay, it is, so it is on the, it is on our website?
The Academic Affairs Board. Oh, it's School Board, I understand.
Okay, okay, thank you. So I won't, I won't take up your time reading all of this, although I would encourage our view in public to access, access this information if they have any questions or concerns. So first, we have two policies for, I'm sorry?
Microphone, please.
So we did receive the correspondence on Friday afternoon that there would be the procedural change. And I was at a wedding, so I did not have a chance to really review the policies and prepare points for discussion and feedback with less than a day of notice in terms of that. So I, I, I am very excited for this procedural change, but I feel like it was at a very late hour and doesn't allow the full board to adequately review the policies, just one of which was twenty-three pages. So we did not, I can't, I can't speak for every board member here, but I know that that was such a tight turnaround and such a difference from what we had been told to do procedurally in the past. And so in, in terms of what is on the meeting and policy review schedule, SAE Administration will, it says identifying shared policy priorities for the academic affairs review seven to ten days prior to the academic affairs meeting.
I'm sorry, what?
But we, as a board.
Where are you reading this from?
On this color-coded timeline. But we, as a board, received these policies only two business days prior to the board meeting. And so that's, that's not sufficient time for the board to review all these policies. So I would like to make a suggestion that we receive the policies at least seven days in advance, seven to ten days, the same as the academic affairs committee, that timeline, in order for us to have adequate time to review these policies.
Stephanie, I think where you're getting that information is under the section for what the SAU administration will do.
Yes.
And what it says for, under the board, the board will review policies prior to the board meeting. And now, am I, am I understanding correctly that you didn't have a chance to look at the policies over, over the weekend?
Only a cursory look. There are close to fifty pages of policy that we had to review, and we were only given them, told what they would be on Thursday afternoon, and only told that the procedure change that we would need to prepare our comments for tonight was only given to us on Friday afternoon. So I'm saying that's not enough of any time.
But I think, I think this particular schedule with the updated responsibilities was included in the packet that was emailed on Thursday. Is that, is that not correct, Kathy? I was.
That's correct.
Okay, so it was emailed on Thursday, just for clarification.
I, I just want to share Stephanie's feelings on this. Getting something on Thursday, maybe Thursday afternoon, this is no criticism of anybody. And then having it Friday, and Saturday, Sunday, which is fine if you don't have anything going on. It's just a true short time. I think perhaps one solution might be that when the academic affairs committee gets into it, let it just be shared with everyone. And then we can go to the meeting if we have an interest in that, and we can better prepare. And everybody would have a way, a whole way ahead of time. So we can all get, we better prepare to look at these and digest them. Like I said, this is no criticism of any.
I, I hear the sentiments, but when I read, I mean, the procedures and how it's laid out in the calendar, it says that we have an opportunity to provide comment at first and second read. And we're all, this is all just first read. So I think there'll be ample time. I mean, you, I mean, technically, the way our policy works is even if, you know, even if it's, you only get the first, you know, the, the policies before first read, and maybe even if it's a short turnaround, there still is a whole entire month until second read. So that's the benefit of doing first read and second reads, so you get every one month to think about it, maybe do additional research. But, you know, I, I would also like to see the policies distributed sooner before meetings. But, you know, I don't think we should miss the fact that we're still on first read with this. So if it was second read, I'd be a little bit more concerned, but we're at first read. So we still have, you know, until our next meeting, which is in Osiphe, to, to review this at the beginning of November.
We've been discouraged by second reads from. We've been discouraged by second reads from...
I'd like to just jump in and ask a clarification from Charlene. Is the intention to workshop through all of these tonight?
The intention is to give the board an opportunity to bring forward any suggested revisions at this time, because that is, this is our regularly scheduled full board meeting, and therefore, this meeting is the initial opportunity for a full board discussion. Whereas in the past, we were requesting people with, board members with questions or suggested revisions, to email them to me and or Heather, so they could be incorporated. But then, the first time the board would have a chance to look at all of the revisions that were sent in piecemeal by individuals would be at second read. And sometimes, you know, we experienced receiving atrocious suggestions immediately prior to a board meeting for second read, and it became, I would say, inadequate in terms of allowing, you know, robust board discussion, you know, before a vote could be taken. So this, this change is to really accommodate the need for these discussions to be able to take place at a full board level, since academic affairs has met the four of us with Heather and Caroline and with the New Hampshire School Boards Association, and their legal council have gone through all these, thoroughly vetted them, and yet, it's important, you know, for extra eyes to, you know, contribute and bring up suggestions or, you know, concepts that may be, you know, split by us. And so, tonight is the first, you know, first read, this is the first opportunity that board members will be able to weigh in and bring their suggested edits. Now Stephanie, since you, and Stephanie and Tom, if you have not, well, I mean, my understanding is you have not had a chance to look at the policies, and so, I would, what I would like to solicit tonight is that any other board member who has suggested edits, share those with us now. Kathy will record those for us, and the board members can, you know, participate in that discussion. And then, as Freddie said, there will be a whole other month before second read, and then if you want to bring suggested edits for second read, what we will do is, we'll make a motion to approve, and it'll be seconded, and then during discussion, you can bring those, those concerns. That's, that's my understanding of how our improved process should work.
Okay, and can I just question, are there people on board here who are prepared to make observations and suggestions and so on in the interim?
That's what we're hoping.
Data?
Ask if I may, just two quick comments for our first read on our policy, if I may. On the first page of our meeting tonight, down at the bottom, it says Q, instructional time guidelines, K to A. I was wondering here if it was the A part or attached to that, that nine through 12 was not included.
I don't see K through A. Where are you seeing it?
Here. It says under LLC, instructional time guidelines, it's only for K through A. I was wondering where nine through 12 was going to be added. We have civs that we have to deal with, and anyways, that's, just make a note of how we're going to get the instructional time guidelines for nine through 12.
We can address that if you would like.
And then, just one other quick one. Underneath J, which is A, J, E, bidding requirements, according to that policy, it written in Saint Gads, that in case of emergency, you can pretty much do what you need to do, so it doesn't cause adversity effects to health, welfare, safety, or the best interests of the district. But I would like to see you change the amount for bidding to $10,000 from $5,000, and I'd just like to have that, to see if you could put it back to $5,000.
Kim, Charlene?
I appreciate your comments, Dana, and with your indulgence, how I envisioned us going through this in the most efficient way was for us to take the policies in order as they are printed on the agenda, and then I will solicit comments in order, and that way we're not having to flip around to different pages. It just seemed like a, I mean, at least the way my more linear brain works, it seemed to me that it would be a logical and more orderly way. That's okay, if you don't mind.
Sure, you can. I asked a question if board members were prepared to make comments on, Dana offered comments on two of the policies. Do others have their, we have things to say. I'm concerned that if we go policy by policy by policy, we're going to be here till midnight today. And, you know, we want to be sure we're going to get some work, actual work done.
What about, what about asking if anyone has comments for new policies that are up, and then get those, and then asking if anyone has comments for policies for revision? I'm just looking at the agenda.
Yeah, we want people to be specific about policies they know they have input on, and let's just address the ones that they mentioned.
Okay.
And, you know, and maybe it will be a small handful.
So you want to start at one of the tables, work our way around?
No, I, I put out the question if people had comments, Dana said he did, now Mary says she does. Are other people prepared to make comments?
I did, I did look at some, I did look at all of the policies, and I do have some comments. Like, if we, I respectfully, Charlene, I would like to go through in the way we made it, and she suggested, and say, does anybody have comments on this policy? If not, we can move on, and if so, we can attend to that.
Okay, so for the benefit, why don't you then read the policy number, ask if anybody has anything to say, and if not, we go to the next one, I would say. I think that would be efficient.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Do any of my colleagues on the board have any questions, concerns, or suggested revisions for the first two policies, ACN, nursing mother's accommodation, which is required by federal law and I believe New Hampshire RSA, which is a new policy, and B, F, F, naming buildings and facilities and dedication areas, which is another new policy?
I have comments on policy ACN. It, there's a few overarching suggestions. One is, the policy requests that nursing mothers provide at least two weeks' advance notice, that they would like these accommodations. I knew for substantially longer than that in advance, and so I think we can ask for more advance notice, particularly because things like schedules are built pretty far in advance, and if schedule changes need to be used, I think for more advance notice we can request the better, so that we can compare. In section B, it says that the district will endeavor to meet the break in space needs of each nursing mother, how often ordinary accommodations will create undue hardship to operations in school or workplace. The district will work with the nursing mother to determine whether other acceptable accommodations may be made, and if those accommodations are attainable, then the nursing mother will consult with the Human Rights and Disorganization Officer. I feel like we, we should make the accommodations. I don't, I feel like 15 minutes a few times a day is something that we should put into policy that we will do for nursing mothers. And the language in the section, if I were a nursing mother, suggests that the district's going to try, that it could be, you could be creating undue hardship, and so we're not going to allow it. And so I would like to see that fee firmed up a little bit, to say that this is something, and perhaps we can define it as an interval, like at least two or three 15-minute breaks to do this. But generally enthusiastic about this policy, and thank you very much for its creation.
Anyone else on either of these two policies?
I have a quick question of Heather. Was this one of the policies that was created by the New Hampshire School Boards Association, vetted by legal counsel based on the new federal law?
Correct.
So how much leeway do we have to modify it?
Depends if you want to go against legal counsel's advice on the wording based on the federal law, how much comfort you have around that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair? I'm just getting chance to glance through the naming of district buildings and facilities and dedication areas. This is the thing the board would put out from right now?
Just for, just for cases.
Just for, okay. Because I am, but I'm not a reserve, right? No, actually, I guess, I'm not a favor of naming buildings. We had a process to name, what do we get, plaque, we had his names, I think that's a very good way to go about it. If we stop naming buildings and facilities and fields, what happens when those get filled up? Do we start buying more facilities, more fields, just so we can, buildings have to be deserving of people? That's my, I just don't think it's a practical policy. I haven't read the one that's being proposed with withdrawal, but I did have questions on it. To me, that's another, is to have a policy for how people get nominated, if they want to apply, and, hold on a minute.
If I were the authority in the plaque, we don't have anymore.
It's gone.
It's gone.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Have they stopped using plaques?
No, the, the policy references that, the policy references that specific plaque that the school district lost probably during reconstruction. I mean...
And does this facility, lands, and so forth, does that have a section on the plaque?
No.
This is specific for buildings and facilities and areas.
Okay, now, it seemed to me that we're, it seemed to me that we were putting up a withdrawal, the, the two policies, placing the person staying on that plaque. And I, I mean, if you do want, if the board does want to name the buildings after people, I have to go with the majority on that. But it would seem to me to have a policy place for lesser citizens, that's it, require a plaque, and have a policy for how people get onto that, because there's a lot of people who deserve recognition.
I agree that people deserve recognition, but I mean, you know, we kind of discussed this regarding plaques, because there's this plaque to Lou Gibson in the Arts Center, and there's a plaque to Lethales at the Illinois Field. We kind of discussed that might be a good process for when someone is to be recognized with a plaque of the board, you know, there's nothing that, there's nothing in this policy that prevents us from, you know, the superintendent or the administration bringing forward a proposal to have a plaque of a specific location for us to vote on. This is just regarding specific spaces and building dedication, so there's a more formal policy, and it's the one that's recommended by the School Boards Association that other school districts use, that kind of got to know. And again, there's some pretty specific language about regarding, like, that the school district and school board should consider how distinguished the service is, and there's an expectation that it's, you know, above and beyond, so it's not, you know, the way this policy, the way I agree is that this is something that you need to have attained, you know, some great status within the community through your efforts and through your merits, and that the school district, you know, sits in a public meeting after, you know, receiving input from people and during public input within, considering where a plaque is a little bit lesser. I mean, I think some of our plaques we currently have haven't even been built around, it's just in the building process.
I'm sorry, I think I, I feel, explain myself. By plaque, I mean a central plaque somewhere, or say, in a high school, in a high school building. It's like we have a trophy case, you have a central plaque in the central, in the central building, and maybe have a policy for the elementary school, and so forth, but so that you don't need it, so that there are times when people aren't deserving of recognition. But we don't need a name of a building or a piece of property after that. They simply can get put on a single central plaque. I understand the issue about the flag scattered around.
If I may, Tom, do you recall the situation we had earlier this year with Jim Skelly?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, and I think this was just a response to that, because we hadn't got a policy at all, and so we weren't able to take any action on that for our common. So, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the spirit of this particular policy came out of recognizing that deficiency in our policies.
Exactly, and that was why, this is one of the, one of the policies that we solicited information from the New Hampshire School Boards Association, and they did have this excellent policy. And if you noticed, one of the things that, that I think is really important is that if you look at the second paragraph under A, it says the board should not consider such actions lightly or based them on recent notable events. And so, it's perfectly fine to be philosophically opposed, you know, to naming buildings and, you know, sports fields and what have you. However, we really need to have some kind of policy in place, so that we're not just, you know, appearing to arbitrarily say, oh, no, we don't think so, or yeah, no, we're not going to do that. We need to have a guiding policy, and, you know, this, this policy is very, you know, it is, I think, general, but yet makes some very good points. And, you know, one of, one of the things that we talked about at the committee level was deciding, okay, what amount of time should last between when a person is no longer employed by the district, or, or, you know, after, after someone who's made great contributions, you know, is no longer with us. And so, you know, we, we decided that one year would be, you know, it was our decision, and of course, if any of you want to make a change to that, if you'd rather see it be two years or five years, that's certainly something that can be discussed now and, you know, and discussed at second read. But, you know, we felt that because we couldn't make it, we couldn't make a decision, because we had no policy on which to base a decision. we had no policy on which to base a decision. And that, that's how we have to operate as a board. We have to base our decisions on, on policies that we've approved. And so that's why we felt it was important to bring this policy forward. And, you know, you made, you made some good points. I think that, you know, if we want, we could, we could create a plaque policy. But in the meantime, this, this was the most germane for what we were dealing with specifically as a district.
Thank you, Shirley.
Did I make a motion? That we talked this for the first reading?
I don't think.
I don't think we need to.
We don't have to make a motion.
We're just discussing.
I'm just trying to facilitate the meeting.
I did. Okay.
I agree with you.
So if, are there?
Not that this isn't an important discussion, but, you know.
Are there any more comments on ACN or AFF? Are we all good on those? Okay. Moving on, did any board member come, would any board member like to come forward with suggested edits for the policies we recommended for revision? And there are a number of them. You can read the alphabet as well as I can. We have, what's that, fifteen or so, I think?
Just want to make a comment.
Okay.
First of all, appreciate also being able to have a paper copy. I'm still old school with the highlighters and not that, so appreciate the time the district staff took to make that paper copy available for me. And I'd like to make a comment on DAF, Administration of Federal Grant Funds, this is not a recommendation for, and it's, it's just that I love, this is page eleven of twenty-three, placing a quite small amount of businesses and women's business enterprises on solicitation lists as a role of a board member. That's happening. That's it.
Any other comments or suggested provisions?
I just have a question on DAF, which is, is this required by the NHSBI?
Well, I know, because, well, all of this is already elsewhere in our GANs and et cetera.
This is a direct correlation to compliance with federal funding. This is actually.
Right, I recognize a lot of this language from federal funding documents that we have to sign in the beginning of the year in order to accept federal funds, so I'm wondering why this needs to be a policy.
Because they require this to be in our policy directly. Yes, we have compliance.
Can, can everyone here hear our声音?
I mean, it's definitely similar to have the tabular program, because we have, we have workforce housing. There are specific policies that you need to have in order for the federal government to provide you with those grant funds. And if you don't have those policies adopted, and you can't show them that you adopted, they will just not provide you the funds with this. It's like for funding any federal funds that we get for education. So if we didn't have these, the feds would just be like, you don't have them, so we're not going to give you the money for, like, example, you know, National School Lunch Act. So it's just us, by the federal mandates, if we don't have this adopted, we won't get the money.
I recognize all this language from federal grant documents, but I was just wondering if this was a required policy for us to have, because this is already in statute all over the place. But we need it as a policy, correct?
This is kind of a leading item, actually, that they lead off with when they come and do.
So the state, when they come and do a compliance check, and do a audit of our federal funds, this is what they lead off with. First, you need to show us your federal fund DAF policy to show that you adopted it. So not only do you have, right, the board has to, the superintendent has to sign off on all those assurances for each and every grant, you also have to have the policy. Multiple layers of requirements to be compliant and to receive federal funds.
Any other suggested provisions for the policies for revision for first reading?
I don't have that, but I will call attention to DDA, the Wood of State Especiable Trust Fund, which may answer some of our prior questions regarding how those funds may be used. But I'll probably want to connect to that. Not the least of which is a statement that the fund balance is to be no less than $500,000. I'd be interested to know if that's true.
I just have an update on that.
But we'll wait, we'll wait, I believe.
I'm sorry, Dana, wasn't, did, earlier on, didn't she bring up a question or concern about one of the, one or two of the policies in this group?
Just on, one would add on, and then the other one was under, under revision.
Okay, I remember you specifically mentioned IIC, Instructional Time Guidelines, and you wanted to know how it was being addressed in nine through twelve. Because this particular policy is, okay, there was another one, I thought.
Yeah, either it was left on, or it needs to be put in under new.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
He, he asked previously about the, what's it called, the increasing from $5,000 to $10,000 under which policy was it even started? The bidding requirements.
B through eighteen, bidding requirements.
He said he wanted it to be, to stay the same and not to change the context.
We worked that prior.
Okay, anyone else know why in on that, or refresh our memories on what was the driving factor behind that change?
Yes, so, asked, we had Kathy O'Neal, Business Administrator, review all the fiscal and financial policies ahead of active affairs, and this was a change she supported on turning over to Kathy.
It, it's becoming more and more difficult to get a bid on items under as low as $5,000, $10,000. Don't get me wrong, we go up and we get quotes for similar items, much lower pricing than that even, Chromebooks, grants, we're buying a whole lot of them, but. We did, we did get quotes, but then.
I was just thinking about this small, small business. Sometimes they would respond to $5,000, where a bigger company wouldn't, wouldn't respond.
It just ties our hands, and a lot of the times when you, when you request a bid, a lot of the vendors will say they're not going to do it, because.
I think if you're the reader, to go from five to ten, so I'm fine with that, but I just think, I was just thinking, suggestion.
Do we have any other suggested provisions for this, this particular block of policies for first read? No? Okay, here, that, Shirley, no more.
For policy DM, I think it could be a lot clearer in terms of what good and prudent accounting procedures are, in terms of who is responsible for handling cash in school buildings, and what sorts of checks and balances there will be for cash in school buildings. Currently, I think the policies sufficiently big.
I could speak to that. So I think the key word there is procedure, for sure. So we want to keep policy, policy and procedure separate, so there would definitely be more specific procedures for cash in school buildings. I think, Dana, also have a question about, I know I'm bouncing around, about instructional time guidelines. So these are, yes, in fact, K through eight. Nine through twelve is not required to this extent in this detail. Nine through twelve is set by, you know, the high school schedule, so it's fixed, and it's.
Yeah, she is hot here.
No, it's. So I believe.
I, I see the instructional time at the back of the packet.
Oh, is it at the end of that?
Yes, the last page. I believe you had a question.
That's what.
One of those.
Oh, okay.
Did you have a question about this policy?
I think he was asking why it wasn't past six, three.
Yeah, this is, well, this is K through eight.
This, this is still K through, this is K through eight.
Correct.
So I don't see nine through twelve.
So nine through twelve would not be.
Some of it is K through six, and some of it is seven and eight. Some of it is K three, but I don't see the high school time line.
So this is not, we're not required to have for high school. The high school schedule is set, so the timelines are, I mean, the instructional time guidelines are already set by the high school, and that's why this policy is only K through eight.
That's mandated.
Oh, the high school's. Is it nine through twelve mandated also?
So nine through twelve is high school graduation requirements. And there's an overall, you know, number of hours required throughout the year.
That's IFC, right? The high school graduation plan?
Oh, yes. I think we did that last.
So Dana, we have high school requirements too, for time and credits and everything. I just had, I have one question, because I'm going to say this, and I guess, I guess so. Is DM the school board association's recommended policy? Do we know that? Does the school board association have a recommended policy for action things, or is it just something that we need to develop because the school board association didn't have one? I should ask after any academic affairs.
Right.
Yeah, because we like, I know we like to stay with the school board association policies, and if they have a policy, that might be more explicit. Maybe we might refer to policy, because sometimes could have a little control and some flexibility. Again, there are stream procedures and policy are a distinction, but school board association has its own policies, and we can, we can, so that'd be good.
I don't think there's a sample for this one, however, this provides a guideline for our staff to not keep more than a certain amount of buildings.
I think it works so hard, but, so, you know, properly, but just in case it happened, a policy would be good to see to come back.
Okay, so I think, I think everyone's had a chance to weigh in on the policies recommended for revision, and last but not least, we have, let's see, we have five policies recommended for withdrawal. And you'll note the very first one is the recognition for accomplishment, which we, as a committee, decided was really, we didn't really need it, because the plaque specifically referred to in the policy is gone, lost and gone forever. So that should be pretty self-explanatory. Did, did anyone have any other questions or comments or suggested provisions? Oh, no, wait, we're not revising these, we're, did anyone have any concern about withdrawing these particular policies?
I have a chance to read all of them for the first read, so at least we'll be back up next.
Sure, okay. Well, you know what, I'll just, I'll do a quick synopsis. The recognition for accomplishment, we explained why that's suggested for withdrawal. Income Devocational Student Building Trust, as I recall, we decided to withdraw this policy because our, our leverage in technology students had not constructed a house in a number of years. And my understanding is that there is no anticipation of that happening anytime soon, so it didn't seem to make sense to keep a policy on something that was non-existent. And then, then talking about the policy on selling and advertising the house, and last, the last policy to recommend for withdrawal makes sense, and it's the attendance policy on days that doesn't need those remote learning days, because the state of New Hampshire voted that there would be no more remote learning days, so obviously, we don't need that policy. And that concludes our work, and I want to thank all of my colleagues on the board. I know that this has taken a fair amount of time, meeting time, however, this, this really is the first and only opportunity that the whole board has the opportunity to weigh in on these policies and, you know, stream, hopefully streamline the process for moving them to second read in our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Thank you for making that an efficient process, and it has not been, thank you. Okay, moving on, buildings and maintenance. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, we have the.
Oh, that's right, I had written it down, okay. The ever-provoked Wood of State, let's see, who wants to speak to it first, maybe Kathy?
Sure, since I guess I pulled some of the answers. So I apologize, Stephanie, like I said, I don't like talking on, because the amount that I thought there was. There was $689,910 in that account, and three percent based on the policy is $20,697.30. That is the amount that can be expended or approved to be expended from that account for this fiscal year.
Well, that's, of course, a different color.
Yeah.
So, so they'll reopen the discussion on the request, bro.
So we talked about, Kim had mentioned, they usually ask for about.
I think approximately $3,600.
Ask for maybe $600, leftovers, leftovers usually at the end of the year, and three percent become scholarships for students. Is there any other money that we could, like, other commitments that we usually see every year, other than?
Not since I've been here. I haven't stopped on this.
I think, I think it would be a sizable amount to do $10,000, but I'm open to it, but I think we have to recognize that that limits other opportunities later in the school year, or later, is it school year or fiscal year? I mean, yeah, later in the school year, because it operates on our fiscal year, so, again, I'm open to $10,000. I mean, I'm just kind of pulling that number out, because, I mean, it's only there what they ask for, but at least we can leave 50% of the money, you know, left. But I think if other people come along for, you know, $2,000 or $3,000, even $4,000, we see requests like that, we're not having the money left over for scholarships. There are other scholarship organizations that support students, but you usually, you know, will have a little bit left over off students, so that's my opinion. I don't know how other people feel, if they want to do less or more. I would be comfortable doing more than $10,000, though, that's, that's 50% of the money, that's just, you know, you're going to, we're going to limit opportunities for other organizations and clubs, to elementary schools, to be able to utilize this money for the state trust.
Other thoughts? Shirley?
I want to shuffle the light.
Okay.
Just getting the light away from our side of the table.
Way to go. Hang on to it, Shirley.
One thought I have is, you know, in terms of impact of these monies, you know, we know that programs like, Kim had mentioned, they serve, you know, dozens and dozens of students, you know, and, you know, this is a really high cost item, there is a lower cost alternative, and I think, you know, if it's the case, I'm proposing $7,000, because we have kind of historically seen some other needs for this, these monies, with the scholarships and the, and we can't even mention that this would be at the heart of what we have, so I propose $7,000.
Make a motion, I'll second.
Make a motion to use $7,000 from the Wood of State Trust to give to the Spanish, the proposed Spanish trip for, it's a middle.
The other trip, the second.
Trip to Spain.
The trip to Spain, what would we go, where are they going?
Seven. I know the intent, we're giving, we're going to expend $7,000 from the Wood of State Trust for that Spanish trip, whatever they choose.
Spend $7,000 from the Wood of State Trust for the Spanish trip.
Okay, so. Okay, so 7,000 dollars is proposed. Stephanie made a motion. Brody second. Do we want to solicit any additional input from our folks who are asking for the money? Any comments?
Sorry for making you wait.
We're just getting another check box.
Mr. Chair?
Amen, yes.
I just want some clarification, please. Kathy, you said the amount available was 20,000 or...
Correct, 20,697 dollars.
Okay, so we're calling, rounding that and calling that 21K, right?
If you want, I mean, that's not a math, but sure.
Well, I mean, you know, 20,600, almost 20,700, that's closer to 20...
We're giving them 30% of the, or a little bit more than 30% of the funds.
Okay, well, I just wanted to say that I am going to vote against the motion, not because I don't want to really have any money, but I like the number eight a whole lot better as opposed to the number seven. So that's just, that's just one of my little quirks.
You can make a motion to...
Well, we already had a motion on the floor, so, you know...
She can try to amend it.
I have a question for our applicants. If we are only able to provide 7,000 dollars, does it put the trip in jeopardy?
I'm not sure, let's see, 7,000 divided by 16. That would make a difference of about $400 per student in the trip cost, so it would bring the total cost down to around $4,000, which is still a lot, but a little bit closer to what we had expected going in.
So you would still intend to have the trip? This would not be a deal breaker?
Yes, we would still try to have the trip. I think though, for some of our students needing some more significant financial aid, it would still probably be too much.
Is there any way to find out if there are any ways to kind of afford the full cost of that, that the extra money could be utilized for the students who can?
Yeah, so we're, I was planning on talking with like our counseling department and figuring out a little bit more once I have a group of students who I know are interested, who is in more need of financial aid than other students.
Other comments? I'll just say, it seems clear that the monies available from this trust fund are quite finite. And so it's, it really does look like a half a loaf type of situation is best to achieve. Eric?
I just want to make a comment. I would hope that you reach for the stars as you presented, having done this kind of thing for the fifth graders to Washington DC and Nassau Langley. We used a joke, it was about dying, it was daughters of donuts. So I know you're beating the bushes for funding, I would just hope you not lower your reach and truly stick with that goal.
Thank you.
Brody?
If we could just connect that side of the meeting, I might be able to find some funders in the town of Wolfboro that I'd be interested in. I don't know how much we should be willing to get, but, you know, some of the little hundreds for the garden playground and everything, I'd be interested, you know, maybe giving that connection.
Any other comments? Okay, we're ready to vote. This is to take 7,000 dollars from the Wood Estate Trust Fund and use it to fund the trip to Spain. So, all in favor? Tom? Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Manning?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes.
Shirley?
I'm voting no, because I think it should be at least 8,000, and that's why I'm voting against it.
Dana?
Aye.
Okay, just to be clear, it's the 7,000. And the chair wrote yes as well, so we approve 7,000 dollars from the trust fund. And Shirley, if you want to make a motion for a different amount, see if you can get a second?
I can make another, I can make a motion to add an additional amount.
Well, that's true.
And I did hear, I did hear earlier, I think we all did, we heard Brody say that the highest he would go is 10,000. So I would like to win.
No, it's not. Some things have transpired in the last 10 minutes. I think 35% of that account is more than enough.
Well, and I also want to point out that it was, the board you voted a while back to, wasn't it our decision to cap the amount at 3%?
Yes, it's, yeah, our names are pretty well tied, it's already part of the cabinet there. I would suggest make a motion if you want to increase the amount, see if you can get a second, otherwise I think the manner has been settled.
I would agree, but I am going to go ahead and try it anyway. I would like to make a motion that we increase the funding for this trip to 8,000.
Okay, we'll need a second if everybody wants to do so. Coming once. Okay, I believe I'll say that the motion fails for lack of a second. Our decision prior for the 7,000 dollars stands. Thank you. Good work, everybody. Congratulations, I've given you some money, but not your dream.
Thank you.
Now, okay, thank you for your patience. Building maintenance report, I will say we had to postpone the previous date, which I think was the 26th of September, till tomorrow. That will happen at the SAVU office at about 4:00 PM. So the maintenance finance, that's Jack's area's chair. I did hear from the superintendent earlier, the budget timeline, so finance will soon become a very busy committee, so look forward to November. Human resources, also a Jack area, a knowledge of the activity there. Okay, for our closing activities, our advanced planning, we've got, for everybody who has a copy of the agenda, maybe we missed that. There will be no school next week on the 9th, something else, I can't remember. Our upcoming week is coming up, October 10th through the 14th. There will be an early release for students on October 18th. October 9th, there will be the LRTC officer induction ceremony. 11:06, the school board meeting will be at the Ossetti Central School, yay. 8:00 AM, 11:08, there will be an early release for parent guardian teacher conferences. 11:09, no school. 11:10, no school for measurements day. So those are our upcoming events. We now have another opportunity for public comment. I see the microphone disappeared from the lecture. So our ALC is the principal Morrissey, it's not a move, these are the things that she lives for.
Yep, reporters, moving microphones.
It's a glamorous life, I'm glad you're living it. So we have an opportunity for public input, another 15 minutes, as we did earlier, if someone has moved to do something. I didn't hear the chairs moving, as everyone looked up, so I'm assuming we're fine with that. Closing comments, any member of the board up here have words of wisdom to share, I think Shirley does.
Well, I'm not sure necessarily Karen drives it, Karen drives its words of wisdom, but thank you for that. First of all, I want to say that I'm happy that we're here visiting an elementary school, and I think it's important for the community to know that for a long, long time, we have been taking in our various board meetings on the road, so that we give our individual towns the opportunity to come out to our board meetings in a more convenient location for them. And I'm very proud that this board has, has been doing that for as long as I can remember. And it was great to see the presentation by our buddy young musicians. And also, on a more serious note, I would, I would just like to express my personal opinion that I'm very much opposed to the decision to rent the art center to a campaign whose candidate is well-known for making violent comments, who has a long history that everyone knows about, and it has been televised on Nazian of using hate speech, of targeting individuals for violence, of targeting individuals for ridicule. And to me, using the example of other political campaigns who have had, who have been able to rent our facility, comparing those political candidates and their campaigns to this particular political candidate and his campaign, I feel is a blatant false equivalency. And I do not believe that, and there is a perception in the community that this was a board decision. It was not a board decision, it was not a decision that we ever had the opportunity to weigh in on. And I understand that decisions are, you know, based on legal counsel. However, I think that there, it's been clear from, from years and years of legal precedents that the First Amendment is not, is not absolute, it does not allow for hate speech. And I am very concerned that our multi-million dollar beautiful building needs to be protected because we have seen the kinds of damage done to other buildings. And I would certainly hope that there is, there is a stronger way to recoup whatever monies we have to expend on any kind of damage repair. I also would like to publicly request that Wolfboro Community Television televise the entirety of this event. And I would also, and I'm hoping that with Wolfboro Community Television there to televise it, I'm hoping that that will inspire appropriate behavior among the participants. And I would also like to request that the school district make sure that we have additional security cameras installed outside and inside, so that if there are folks, we, I have personally seen on social media, members of this community who are actively advocating for the end of the GW RSD, who believe that, that we should not exist as an institution. And my concern is that some of these folks could possibly be inspired to do things that would be detrimental to the district. And I am going to leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Shirley. Brody?
I just want to say condolences to your family, to yourself, Jen, I'll pass it to your brother in front, I can do yours.
Thank you.
As a broker, I'll make a motion to a chair.
Well, does anybody else have comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, Mary.
So, milking the newness of my presence on this board. I want to thank the, my gratitude to the district office, the relative departments, my observation and receiving of the kiteses. It certainly demonstrates what's valued in this, in this district. I find your integrity phenomenal, your responsiveness, and your accountability. And I also want to thank the presence, our presence here at FEM, I learned about the little school, the big school. And I've been able to attend the open houses that I could get to geographically, and they've all been, just phenomenal, so applause, applause to everyone. I guess I'll close it out with that.
Any other comments? Anybody? Jokes? Oh, and the gentleman from the audience, make it really, really quick.
I just wanted to, I'm really trying to be, I heard the point, having the radicals or whatever, and that's why I still like your motion.
All right, well, thank you. Very good. All right, maybe I'll get it the last word before we go, I want to thank Principal Morrissey for hosting us, always doing a great job making sure everything's set up perfectly. We always enjoy the sound system in here, seems to work pretty well. Here we have three microphones here, one there, and not to be disparaging in any way, but often it performs far better than other venues where everybody has their own microphone, and sometimes that doesn't work out as well, so that's great. And also just want to recognize that while this is a special day, you do a great job every day here at Effingham Elementary School. And I am also grateful because the, here at Effingham, I have a shy drive home tonight. Okay, fellow members of the commission.
Motion to the chair.
Motion to the chair. Yay. Hey, Tom? Yes? Brody, yes? Stephanie?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yes.
Shirley?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Okay, chair votes a, he needs a chair.